Sir, may I?
Not great. How are you doing? We're gone.
You're listening, yeah?
Okay.
It's hot. Maybe just wait for something else to come through.
I agree. I do the same thing.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 5th meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. If, uh, Patrick, are you gonna do the honors and call the roll?
I'm gonna try. I don't have my glasses, but, uh, we'll, uh, we'll give it a shot. Yeah, I'm gonna do that, but I'm writing them down so I can put check marks. Okay, Chairman McGee.
Here.
Um, Vice Chair Hauser.
Here.
Okay, um, Mayor Bixson.
Here.
Uh, Councilman and Commissioner Sage.
Here.
Commissioner Gasson.
Here.
Commissioner Lord.
Here.
Commissioner Kenjuk.
Here.
And Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Stone.
Here.
Okay, all present.
Very good. We have not only a quorum, but a full house. Very good. Please show me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had enough from the seat there to turn around.
Man, there's a pledge.
Right in your face.
No.
There it was. Thank you very much. First order of business, number three, public comment. This is for, uh, comments on anything preferably not on the agenda later on. Do we have anyone that wants to speak at this time? Is Rose, uh, is Rose up there?
Yes, she's, uh...
I am. There's nobody waiting.
Okay, thank you, Rose. Yes, sir, good evening.
You're welcome.
Good evening. I'm not sure if the thing that I want to speak on is on the agenda or not.
Well, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Scott Marley. I live at 753 Ludlow.
Hi, Scott.
Hello. Um, I've been living there for 15 years. I wanted to talk about the proposed rezoning of the property at the corner of Ludlow and Woodward, the SolarOnics property.
Okay. It's not on the agenda tonight. It was on...
So this is appropriate to talk about it now?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, I was at the planning commission meeting last month. Um, I didn't get up and speak. I was there with a lot of other people in my neighborhood. I think a lot of us thought that, um, just being here and showing our support for some of the other speakers was adequate, and, um, we all gave a lot of applause when my next-door neighbor stood up and gave a pretty passionate speech, so, um, but then I later saw a video of a meeting with the DDA where Mr. Banda said that everybody was wowed by the presentation of the developers. And so I wanted to make sure that I came back tonight and let you know that we were not wowed by that presentation. And, um, we all, all the people that I speak to stand strongly against that proposal.
Okay, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Nick, I don't know if you have any comment?
Yeah, so what I said was, um, if I use the word wow, it was a complete presentation. We complimented the presenters, and we complimented the residents for how professional they were. And everybody, we were wowed by how everybody handled themselves. I have an update from, I can get at the end of the meeting if you'd like. We met today with a developer.
Okay.
So I was gonna give you an update, but yeah, so it wasn't meant that it's important.
One of the things all of us had heard in advance of the meeting is that there was a petition with 1,000 names on it, and I think everybody expected that.
Yeah.
I don't know what we had. I don't know if any counted, but 75 to 100, probably something like that. And, uh, and we didn't have that, and everybody was really polite. It was late on the agenda, and they had reason to get antsy, and they didn't.
Yeah.
So, um, I guess I second what Nick says. We weren't saying we supported the project so much as the way it was done.
That's fine. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure that my voice is heard and that my presence
is not misinterpreted. I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, and if I can just say just a couple more comments on this subject here.
Please.
Um, in the presentation that we saw last month, again, by Mr. Banda, um, it seemed like we were being presented with, um, a set of options, and, you know, we were told that the, the current owners had tried several times to sell the property and that they were unable to do so. Then some people wanted the city to buy it, but that was a nonstarter because of the costs involved.
Sure.
And so what else are we gonna do? Obviously, it has to be rezoned so someone else to buy, can buy it. But I think that there's another option, which is it doesn't get rezoned, and the current owners have to deal with whatever problem they happen to own. And I'm not sure how big that problem is, but the fact is, it's their problem, and I don't think that they should be bailed out at the expense of the other residents in order to overcome that problem.
Very good.
Yeah.
Appreciate your comments.
Okay.
They're on the record, and, uh, you know, I don't know that we have anything scheduled for it. It'll come back sometime.
Great. Thank you.
Whenever they're ready to re-present it. And, uh, you know, appreciate you coming in, and thank all of your neighbors.
On January, I saw that the January meeting was, was not on the calendar or was canceled, so does that mean...
We'll do that tonight. We'll set the calendar.
You'll set it tonight? Okay, thank you.
It'll be Jan, the first Monday of January.
Sounds good.
Tuesday.
Thank you, sir.
It's gonna be Tuesday 'cause of Halloween. Third, January 3rd.
Okay. We'll get to your presentation later. All right, now we have number four approval of the minutes, and this is consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 7th. I ask the commissioners if you've had the opportunity to review the minutes, and if you have any additions, deletions, corrections. If not, um, we'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by the mayor. Do we have support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Sage. Uh, any other discussion? The roll call, please.
Mayor Bixson.
Here, uh, yes.
Councilman Sage.
Yes.
Chairman McGee.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Stone.
Yes.
Commissioner Gasson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lord.
Yes.
And Commissioner Kenjuk.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, next is, uh, public hearings, and we do not have any public hearings tonight. So moving on to number six, considerations. A is adopt the planning commission meeting dates for calendar year 2023. We do this every year, uh, for the benefit of ourselves and the public. Lay out our, um, our meetings so that everyone has a chance to add them to their calendar. The meeting's always the first Monday of every month. That's the official monthly meeting, and then when need be, we try to get a third, a second one in, which is usually the third Thursday of the month, making arrangements to use this room because so many other people do. So, um, commissioners, we have this in front of you. I don't know if you want to review it quickly. I did not.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the schedule for next year's calendar as presented?
Nick, this follows our same typical flow. First, um, first Monday, and then, uh, third Thursday, in the event we have a second one.
Yeah, we don't have the Thursday meetings on here.
But that would be typically when they would be.
Correct.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Gasson to approve this schedule for next year. Their support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Stone. Any other discussion? So if you would add these to your calendar, excuse me.
I know this doesn't affect most people, but, um, I was gonna point out the school break this year goes until January 9th. I will be gone for the first January meeting. I don't know if anybody else has conflicts for that one.
Okay.
So we'll want to...
Thank you for letting us know.
I might be out that, that day as well. You guys have kids. I bet I know where you're heading. Okay.
I think I'm gonna take time off, too.
Okay, any other discussion? The roll call, please.
Commissioner Gasson.
Yes.
Commissioner Stone.
Yes.
Chairman McGee.
Yes.
Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Councilman Sage.
Yes.
Commissioner Kenjuk.
Yes.
Commissioner Lord.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Hauser.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Do you wanna go get your glasses?
Binoculars.
I got an app for it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, number six, B, lighting provision draft ordinance. Uh, Jeff, you're handling this one?
I, I am. Uh, before you is a, uh, an ordinance, uh, to section 2306, the lighting and illumination ordinance. This is not, uh, a section that is foreign to this body, uh, as there's been, uh, many discussions and iterations, or iterations, excuse me, uh, of this ordinance and possible ordinance amendments, uh, over the last couple of years. When you last saw it, there was a proposed ordinance amendment, uh, specifically adding, um, section 2306, current four, uh, which is, uh, deals specifically with single-family residential lighting. Um, it, that did not, um, that did not proceed from this body. Uh, there was not a, a motion to move it forward to city council. City council also considered an ordinance to the general code, um, and to a different section in, in chapter 20. Uh, that also didn't, uh, didn't move forward at that time. Um, a couple of months ago, uh, there was a, a presentation by a resident who was in the, uh, who was in the audience, uh, audience today, and, uh, she presented some additional, uh, comments and some materials that, uh, she, she felt were appropriate, um, for city council to consider. And then that turned into a city council directed administration to, um, put together a, a, a possible ordinance amendment utilizing that information. And so that is what this, uh, ordinance is today. Uh, this version retains a lot of the same language as the previous version, and, uh, specifically pointing out, uh, that subsection 4B, which is, um, the provision that we had considered, uh, regarding that this wouldn't be generally enforced by the city, except through, uh, if it was initiated by a resident complaint. Um, also, that, uh, subsection 4C, and that there would be a, a 30-day notice, uh, excuse me, a 30-day, um, time period if there, if the property owner was notified that a light was in violation. They have, would have 30 days to, from the date of the notice, uh, to address the issue, uh, and, uh, make sure that it was not in violation. And, uh, subsection D, um, was, uh, let me go back to C. The 90, the 30 days was different, is, is a shorter timeframe than it was when then planning commission considered last time. It was that we call it a sunset provision. Uh, so the last, um, version was a six-month, um, uh, time provision, and considering that this was still gonna be resident, uh, compliant, uh, excuse me, complaint-based, uh, before he was a, a suggestion of, of 30 days, that's not a magical number, but that's one that we're presenting for discussion. And, uh, indeed, um, that's just a general, that, that this is not, uh, exclusive language for, that would apply to residential lights, but in addition to anything else that would be, uh, in there. And specifically, I'd point out that it would still, uh, capture the one-foot candle limitation that is in the previous subsection three section. Um, so what has changed? So, uh, other than the, uh, sunset provision adjustment, the, uh, subsection A is where the, uh, I guess the, the meat of the change would be. Um, instead, there was a requ, before, there was a requirement to, to have it directed, you know, specifically directed down and away from, uh, other property. In this one, it, it's the same situation, but it's, it has different language, which is, uh, residential, um, it says that lights, uh, that exceed 100 watts or the equi, or the LED equivalent, spotlights, floodlights on single-family residential properties must be directed away and shielded from other residential lots so that no direct light falls onto, uh, other residential lots. Now, that is, I would say, um, that is in addition to any one-foot candle, uh, general limitation, but, uh, that, that is the language that city council, uh, considered and suggested that city, that, uh, planning commission, uh, take a look at and evaluate. I would say, uh, because I've had questions on process, I'll just lay the process out at this point. So, uh, since this is a zoning ordinance, that's why it's before you. Uh, city council has not seen this version, uh, because it's properly started at the planning commission. And the process is that, uh, it, planning commission would set it for a public hearing. Um, all zoning ordinance are required to have a public hearing at the, uh, at the planning commission level. And then, once that occurs, uh, the matter is, uh, put forth to city council. Uh, that, that is not something that planning commission is required to approve the language, um, but it could go to city council with a negative, uh, a negative, uh, recommendation as well. Um, the, the language of the ordinance, 'cause I wanted to refresh, um, it is, it, all it does is require, at this level, at this body, is to have the public hearing, and then to make a report to city council, and then it's up to city council. Planning commission can't approve, uh, and put it on the books. It would ultimately go to, to planning, excuse me, to city council for that action.
Even if planning commission declined it?
Well, and that's, and that's where I wanted to, well, that's why I wanted to say. So, it's planning commission, and maybe that's on me, uh, the last time, because it didn't move anywhere, right? It's, planning commission said, "We don't want to advance it," and then city council, uh, had to, to address it that way. In this particular, I wanted to make sure that we looked at, it's, um, the requirement from planning commission is not to, um, it doesn't approve it. It, the, the option is to have discussion, or the, the directive is to have discussion, and send it to city council with a report. And that can be a negative, a negative recommendation, like, you know, "We're, we're doing this because this is the process, but we don't feel it's appropriate, or we do feel it's appropriate." And usually, uh, from this body, it comes with a positive because you vet out the, the issues, and generally you have, uh, you obtain a majority that say, "Let's move it to city council for consideration." So that's why I wanted to point that out. It doesn't have to be a majority saying, "We like it." It just, you advance it with, and whatever your comments are will be transmitted.
And then council can do it.
Exactly right.
Just, may I clarify? Yeah. So the, moving it to council isn't an option we have. It goes to council no matter what, from here?
Well, and you would, you would move it to city council with a report and what your, your input is, if you will. So I, I don't want to split hairs, which I know you're, you're not trying to do, because it's kind of, that's the language. And so it doesn't say you have to move, uh, to move it forward, but it would go to city council. That, I would still say that the process is that regardless, you know, once the public hearing occurs, then it would, I would say that the requested action when it comes back is to, is to discuss and to, um, provide the council, or excuse me, the commission's report to city council as to their position on it.
So we file our report, and it does go to council?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I just felt, I get staff, we didn't take a recommendation of this. We don't support this. So we're not going for or against, there's, it's, uh, it was asked of us to bring it, so we brought it.
Um, the two quantities in here are foot candle and wattage. How do those, how would that employ in court? How would that be evaluated?
So those are, you would, such a light would have to meet both standards. And that's where that subsection D, uh, would come into play, is that they would have to meet both standards. In this particular scenario, the, the light that, that was evaluated never met the one-foot candle at the property line. And so it was still considered to be, uh, troublesome, um, for the resident who expressed that at this body and at city council. So this would be in addition to. So someone could meet the one-foot candle, say it's a half-foot candle, making it up, but it was, it was definitely less than one-foot candle, but it would still need to meet this cri, this criteria.
So even if it was 50 watts, it could be one-foot candle or exceed one-foot candle, I suppose?
Well, if it exceeded, no matter what the type of fixture, you, no matter what kind of light in the city, it can't, it can't exceed one-foot candle.
Okay.
So that is, that is a, a baseline prohibition. It can't be one-foot candle or more at the property line.
Mr.?
So, I, I think maybe what you're trying to get at is theoretically, a light could have one-foot candle or less, but the wattage could be in excess of what's...
You could go look at the bulb, and it could say 125.
Right. And, and, you know, this issue has been up before, and I did some research, and I actually went to city council as an individual, and the problem that I have with this is that the current, or the, the proposed ordinance, the proposed change, actually makes it more restrictive than what's, was presented before, which was not well-received by the commission. And one of the concerns that I have is that many of the fixtures that are on houses in the city of Rochester have multiple bulbs. Okay, so for instance, and I, this was from before, so if you have an exterior fixture that has multiple bulbs, which lots of them do, the wattages is additive. So if you have three light bulbs here, that's 180 watts, you've already gone and violated the ordinance, which I believe, Jeff, is it a misdemeanor?
It, it would be a misdemeanor, but by itself, it wouldn't be in violation. It would just trigger the having to be directed or shielded away from...
Right.
...the other residents.
But...
So just having it, and, and I know that's not where you're going, I just want to...
Right.
But it is additive. I mean, you count up the wattage for the number of bulbs.
I would say.
Yes, and, and so you have this, someone builds a house or puts this on the side of their house.
Yes.
And now they're, you know, mandated to have this, a shield, you know? And, and I guess just from an aesthetic view, I contend that's an incredibly burdensome obligation for any resident to have to adjust some type of fixture that they purchased for their house. Second is that it's not just this. I, conceivably, what about Edison lights that people have for landscaping, you know, or decoration on their back patios? Those would also be subjected to this type of ordinance. And I just look at this, and I say, "I appreciate the intent," and no, Jeff, please don't take, but I don't know if this ordinance gets us to where, at least I would feel comfortable saying, "Yeah, I think this is where we want to go on this." It's just, to me, it's, it's, it's the same thing, maybe repurposed, but maybe even more burdensome than what was presented to us before, which was summarily, I think, denied by everyone on the panel.
And it would only be triggered by a subjective complaint?
That's exactly right.
During our last meeting, there was a woman who came up and talked about the lighting, and...
The woman from Rochester Hill?
Yeah, and I thought what she had to say. I, I think in, like, theory, I'm, you know, proponent of putting limitations, but I don't know that wattage captures it appropriately, because when you use LED bulbs, you could have very, very bright bulbs that don't get picked up with that wattage. I think she spoke of the Kelvin of the bulbs, and having a, a lower Kelvin would potentially achieve. So I don't know if that might be a better measure than wattage.
I don't know, and, um, we've, I've got some experience, because in our subdivision, uh, five or six years ago, we converted from high-pressure sodium to LED lights.
These are the streetlights?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, there were a total of 227. Um, we had a combination of 150 watt and 225 watt lights, and they were replaced with, uh, uh, LED whites, LED lights that were 51 and 73 watts. Couple things to note. The LED lights are more directional by design, by technology, because the high-pressure sodium lights that we had, they dispersed out horizontally, whereas the LED lights go almost straight up and down. And we actually had a few complaints from residents because the HPS lights illuminated right up to their house, right up to the brick. And the LED lights that we replaced them with, they were brighter, but the light was more focused and more contained, and they actually felt that was a negative. Okay?
Because it created dark areas, or...
Yes, yes. So, so that's one concern that I have. Um, Kelvin, um, most of your LED lights for commercial purposes, standard are sold as 4,000 Kelvin. If you want to get something other than that, it may not be available, or it may be more expensive as an option. Um, so that, that, that would be another concern. Um, you know, I've read through this proposed ordinance, and I believe, um, roadway lighting, which is what we have, would be exempt, but I am concerned that, you know, is it, does it need to be maybe narrowed a little bit further for, um, specifically Stony Creek Ridge and Stony Creek Ridge North? Because we have lantern-style lights, not the globe style. And, and as a result, the lantern style, again, because of design, they have to be open. If you put a shield on it, the LEDs themselves will get too hot, and it would cause maintenance problems down the road, causing them to burn out. So I, I, I see some problems in the way this, this is written, just practical problems.
Mr. Engineer.
Um, I, I guess the one question I had, as I was just reading through this, is, um, foot candles, how are, how are we measuring foot candles? Somebody's going out with a light meter?
Chief, do you have a device?
Yes, I do.
And to follow up with that, it's just, how can you tell where that light source is coming from when you're taking that measurement?
I was looking up Kelvin, so, uh, please, uh, rephrase the question as I was learning about, more about Kelvin.
My, my question was just, um, how are, what are you using to measure foot candles at a property line, and how...
So we use a, a photo, uh, electric, uh, device that we can measure lumens and, uh, foot candles.
And, and how can you tell which light source that is?
Well, if you take a look at most of the residents or residential areas in town, there's multiple lights. So to your point is about, uh, there's two things that are cumulative, sound and lighting. Um, when you have more sound devices, your decibels go up. Same things with lighting. So we don't necessarily identify and say it's that particular light or that particular light. We go to the property line as described within this, the current, um, the code, and measure at the five-foot level for the lighting. And we'll typically walk along the property line to see if it's consistent or if it has highs or lows.
So it could be multiple fixtures?
It definitely could be multiple fixtures, yes. And it could be a combination of, um, streetlights and other lights that are, um, are out there.
Okay.
When we, when we start talking about Kelvin, um, Kelvin measures in essence, as you've talked about it, the temperature of the filament...
Yeah.
...that's generating the light. And so we don't have a device that would measure the Kelvin. We'd actually have to, you know, knock on the door, we'd have to go and ask the, the resident, um, about their bulb. We more than likely are gonna have to, you know, I, I don't know that a resident will keep the information and say, "Well, my bulb is 4,000 Kelvin," or whatever. Also, we're gonna have to try to then determine, uh, if we go to Kelvin, what, what the, uh, rating of that bulb happens to be.
But even a Kelvin-rated bulb has lumens and foot candles?
Of course it does. All, and I guess, and, and again, as we all know, light is putting out sources in different wavelengths, whether it's ultraviolet, infrared, all of the different waves are coming from different types of lights. Um, you know, somebody mentioned the sodium vapor lights, uh, and all of the different lights put out different light sources. Um, and, and in essence, kind of the most common measurement comes down to lumens or, um, foot candles.
Chief?
Christian?
I know when this issue was brought before the commission last time, or maybe the time before, I'd ask you a couple questions, and I want to see if that answer's changed at all.
Okay.
As we get to the end of 2022, are you responsible for going out for complaints on light issues?
Yes.
Okay, and in 2022, are you able to tell me, or tell the panel, how many light complaints that you've addressed?
So we've had, uh, two. One earlier in the year, several times at a residential, and one, uh, two weeks ago, involving an apartment building, and it was apartments within that complex complaining. So we've had two light complaints that we've followed up on so far this year.
Two light complaints, one being apartments and one being residential residential?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And I guess the next question I have might be for Mr. Banda, if that's okay. Mr. Banda, and I think I may have asked you this question last time as well, if this ordinance was to go into effect and be implemented, do you have an estimate as to how many households or properties would be impacted by this particular ordinance and that it, they would be in a violation?
Right, so just observing person driving around would be thousands, literally, literally every house you drive down at night has porch lights on.
Correct.
Virtually every house, most have one, two, three, or four, so I don't know a number, but it's everywhere in the city, and I don't know how the chief deals with light on a full moon even.
Right.
Because the, the moon's generating light at, when he's measuring at the property line, so even that is a factor that, that we need to look at. But literally, as this was always been talked about, you just drive around, look at virtually every single house has porch lights on for a reason. Some were done, and to Commissioner Kedjic's, Kenzog's point, even our paddles downtown, at first it was overwhelming for everybody. When you drove underneath, if you drive underneath the lights on Main Street, look up, you're blinded. You just get used to not doing that. They, you're right, they shine down, they're set up in these little panels. I have never seen a garage light that's facing parallel to the, to the ground or perpendicular to the ground.
Shutting out.
Have, yeah, have LEDs the way you see panels, so I, I don't even know what LED lights, a light bulb, I guess the new light bulbs are LED technically, but the ones that caused the biggest problems with the directional are the panels that are usually in the air pointing straight down. You look up, it's literally go blind.
There, there is actually a style of LED lights that are referred to as corn cobs, and they're usually used to retrofit an existing light bulb. But when you install the corn cob type light, you have to have a, a frosted globe to prevent it from blinding you, and they're really bright.
And I have just a question for, for the city attorney. So, Mr. Crad, if I understand it correctly, if I'm reading the ordinance, the proposed ordinance correct, under section 4C, it says a light, any light fixtures that do not conform to the requirements of this ordinance must be removed or brought into compliance within 30 days of the notice from the city that the fixture's in violation. So I just want to make sure I understand the math. We've got one residential complaint in the calendar year, thousands of affected houses potentially, and they would have to remove these and replace them within 30 days upon a written notice from the city, is that right?
If, if there was a resident complaint on that light.
Gotcha, okay.
So, so to your, to your, where you're, you're getting to is, this wouldn't, if there was no other complaints in the city, this is not a widespread process. If there was, you know, if, if this went into place and then we had 100 people saying, I'm complaining about that light, that light, that, then that would be yes.
Right.
But this would only, the compliance notice would only trigger if two things happen. One, there was a resident complaint, and number two, if the city determined that subsection A was in violation.
But you would agree with me that there's nothing that could prevent any resident from, if they had enough time or interest or motivation, from driving around the city and saying, that's a violation, that's a violation, that's a violation. It doesn't restrict you to saying you have to be adjacent to the offending property?
It doesn't affect, doesn't have to affect their property.
Right, so anyone could go along and summarily identify properties that were in violation of this, and they would be having to, to remove and replace this?
With the current language, yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, what we talked about at staff was exactly that. When the first person gets this notice, then they're going to, this happens to the chief all the time, and he has his speech that says, if we better stripe our parking lots, because when we write somebody a ticket for not striping their lot, they're going to get us. And that's what happens. So you write a violation to one person, and vindictive, rightly so.
It'll spread.
They'll start going out and saying, well, everything, they can just drive around and not be affected. If, yeah, so the answer to that is, we're worried about it.
When this first came up, it was about apartment lights, if I recall, and you put a lot of time and effort into that. And I believe, I don't know about this one the other day, but we have pretty good compliance. I, I was able to go drive around to those complexes and see for myself what the problems were, and a lot of them were very annoying. You solved that, I think, for most cases. That one the other day, was it one of our apartment complexes with a-
And here's the interesting thing, is, is the apartment complex decided to fix lights that had been broken for multiple years. And so when they fixed them, and we did have one of the apartment across the street from where they had fixed the coach lamps, complained about the lamp. We went out, we measured, we followed, we had fallen, fallen, followed up with the, the person who had made the complaint. And we also then talked to the property manager to let them know that we have had this complaint and that, you know, we, we want them to make sure that they're following the rules in regards to-
Thanks, but no good deed goes unpunished.
Correct, yes.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing. So our biggest worry was when we went to LED lights, when the DDA paid for replacing all of the lamps on University. We did that downtown first strategically, didn't affect anybody, it was the businesses, and it lit up the roadway, which was for safety. If you drive University, if you live on a house that fronts University and that light's in front of your house, how, you'd have to have 53 darkening shades to block that light, because it's not screened on the backside, it's just pure through a, and we'd have zero complaints on that. And I, I'm amazed at that because I had to change all those folks' light, because it went from a soft yellow to that bright white up 25 feet or less into their homes, and we had zero complaints on that.
They're so ubiquitous now, it's hard to find a city that still has the old Cobra heads, or whatever you call them, I mean, everybody has made the change. My point, my point was that I could drive up to those apartment complexes and see the problem. Now, my wife thinks I'm crazy, but I drive around the city at night, specifically looking at this problem, Pat by your house, of course, just to, just to see it. I'm not affected by it. I, it must be, I just came out of my subdivision, every condo has lights, two lights on the front, because they come on automatically. And I'm, I'm having a hard time, where I'm leading is, I want to see some examples. I, I want to, I would like a list of addresses that I could, and all of these commissioners could go see, of a light situation where it's perceived to be a violation or something offensive. I'd like to see that myself before I pass judgment on this, on this ordinance. I, I cannot drive around here and say, yeah, there's one, there's one, you know, they're not popping out at me. I don't know what other people think about that. Give me a list of 10 addresses, residential addresses, where it's perceived that these are in violation. I want to judge this for myself. Before, I would recommend adopting another ordinance that may or may not solve the problem, but definitely may be used to bother a lot of people in the city because of subjective judgment about the condition of the light.
Mr. Chairman, I, I do, you mentioned a word that I, I ask whichever this honored board or city council, when you empower me, I serve the city and the residents, I only ask you that you give me something that's qualitative in regard to-
Not subjective, but object-
Not, not subjective, but I, I would very much ask that we have something that I can say, is it five or is it six? Is it one, is it two? I, I need that so that I don't get caught up in the trick bag of, of preferential treatment.
Have you ever talked to Detroit Edison? Could you? I mean, they supply electricity to every single light bulb in the city. They have to hear complaints. I'd, I'd like to hear their two cents on this.
Well, you know, I take that back. So when we did all the subdivision lights, we got, and all the lights in our side, even the west side, we changed every single light, because when Anthony Maggiore, our treasurer, made that deal with the company, came in and for free, changed every light that the city owns to LEDs. We got probably six or seven complaints, called Edison, they got in touch with the company, and they rectified them, whether they aimed them down a little bit. The, the problem is one right in my corner of, of Castell and Fort that if you aimed it this way a little bit too much, that person complained, a little bit too much, they complained. So they, they found the happy medium, but, so they did deal with it and adjust them, but that, again, is the overheads.
But that's the road lights. I'm talking about the residential lights, which they also power, which they also sell, by the way.
Well, actually, Detroit Edison can't sell light bulbs anymore.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Well, they, they underwrite them though, so if you go to your Friendly Ace Hardware, there's a Detroit Edison sign that says, this light bulb would normally cost $9, and you get it for three.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm not sure about that, but I, I think, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, Edison information is going to give us the savings of switching from a standard bulb.
I want to hear their input on residential lighting and complaints, because they have to get a lot of complaints.
Mr. Chairman, are you, and for the complaints, are you looking at the existing ordinance as is in excess of one foot candle from that point of?
I want to stay where we are myself until proven otherwise. And for me, proof is, I got to go out and see it.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to echo one of Mr. Banda's earlier comments. When we, I've been in this position within my association for, I just finished my 11th year. And when we had the HPS, high pressure sodium lights, the lamp posts stand 18 feet tall, and like I said, they, they shine out horizontally, and we actually had to put shields on four or five lights because of people's complaints, especially, I recall one in particular, they just moved into the subdivision, and they said it was just lighting up the room. So when we switched to the LED lights, no complaints whatsoever.
The original ones have been the old sodium vapor, or whatever, whatever they were, yeah, the conventional lights.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So basically, all we're discussing tonight is whether we move something forward to council, correct?
Well, I think these folks here want to know whether or not it's something they can approve. I think, I think we want to do our duty.
Fair enough, and I don't want to add another metric to this ordinance, because we've discussed it multiple times. So here's my, not concerned, but on one side, on the commercial side, right, we say there's a standard, but we're not allowed to apply that to a residential side. So why, why aren't we being fair to both sides?
I, I would want to apply a standard after I investigate it and determine whether or not it's valid.
Understood. So, but again, it's already good on a commercial side, but we won't apply it to a residential side.
No, I'm, I'm surely not saying we won't apply it. I don't have enough information to, to make that decision.
But we, but we have enough information on a commercial side to do that.
And it's working.
Okay, so why does it work?
I don't have enough information?
No, I was just, I do want to point out, there's other communities, I've been looking at lighting ordinances in neighboring communities, and there are others where they have lighting ordinances for everything but RM1s, everything but single-family residential. So it's not, I don't think we're unique in that way, where we might have a different approach for commercial versus single-family residential.
I'm looking at Rochester Hills ordinance, and it specifically exempts residential lighting, so this is that unique.
For me, it's the same.
Auburn Hills also. So, and I think, Commissioner Sage, too, we're also dealing with an aesthetic versus a commercial building. So when you have someone's house, there's lots of design features that go into it from the standpoint of, hey, I want a particular fixture because it matches the siding, or it matches the look of the house, whereas you have a commercial building or some industrial building, I mean, they're pretty stock, and not a lot of thought really goes into those particular pieces. Residents spend an incredible amount of money on their property, on their house, and they want it to have a certain look, style, and, and feel. And when we talk about, hey, that light fixture looks good, but you have to, you know, fabricate some custom shield over that carriage light in front of your garage, I just don't know how impractical and more importantly, well-received that's going to be by the resident, because I'm picturing someone saying, you're out of your mind if you think I'm going to put a piece of foil over my carriage light on the house here. So that, those are just practical things that I think about when, when looking at this.
I'll tell you what I remember the most during that discussion a year ago, there was an elderly woman who called in. She, we didn't see her, and she was adamant that she loved the city of Rochester, she loved all the lights as she drove through town, and it made her feel safe. That, I remember that very well, and she wasn't kidding. And she said, my neighbors are the same way. Rochester's a city of lights. We like to drive through and see the shadows on the houses and that sort of, and we feel safe. And I, I remember that comment very specifically. So that's the reason that I am not pushing to move this forward without further investigation.
So I guess I want to publicly say, we're dancing around this whole good neighbor theory, right? So good neighbor theory works until it doesn't. So how do we fix this?
Well, I, I think, again, if I, and I mean this, one of the reasons why I asked the chief about the good, you know, how many complaints, is this an epidemic? Is this a situation that is a pattern and practice throughout the city?
Does it have to be an epidemic?
Well, I think so, and I, I think we have to look at the proportionality based on a number of complaint versus a number of adversely impacted residents. And if it was close, then I think, yeah, we could absolutely address this issue.
So if you're the one resident that it impacts, right?
But here, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, go ahead.
Go.
No, I, I think it's impacted in a subjective manner, because the chief has been out there several times, and it's not been in violation of the ordinance. And so what we're doing here is we're drafting and cramming an ordinance into effect that might not be a problem based on what we have already. And I just have a real fundamental problem of trying to jam a square peg into a round hole over a single isolated incident that frankly, isn't even a violation of the ordinance that we have now. That's the issue.
Again, to my point, we can apply it on commercial side, but we can't on residential? So just tell me, tell the public why it should not apply to residential.
It should not apply to residential, because I think you have an inherent difference between safety, between someone's house, the proximity of people's yards, where they sleep, where they live, where their families reside, versus a commercial building in an expansive parking lot that isn't occupied during all hours of the day. That's the difference from a security perspective. Two, from a shielding perspective, if you have a situation where you have a commercial property to a residential, I understand that. But here, you have two residentials who are afforded the same right to have that privacy, that safety, security, and it's their property, as long as it doesn't encroach, which it hasn't in this particular instance, I do not believe that this ordinance solves that problem. And if I wasn't clear, I'm, I'm not trying to be a wise guy, I'm just trying to-
So would you just strike the additional metric, or you would completely just say, we shouldn't apply this?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't apply any, I would leave what we have on the books as is. That's what I would do. I wouldn't change anything that is already on the books, based on the data that we have to date, a number of complaints versus, he's been out there, the chief has been out there on numerous occasions, and there's not a violation.
Would you mind if I have Pat come up?
Yeah.
Come on up. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'd like to go down a little checklist. I heard the word, first of all, let's start this. Safety belongs on your property. Actually, there's more safety when your lights are shielded and you don't have the glare because you have better visibility. If all these cities outside of Michigan, with a population like ours, could handle it and be in compliance and not issue tickets, and have better visibility where they actually showed comparisons and photos, why are we so exceptional? And we're not. Next, the lady that spoke about safety with lights, lights don't cause more safety, that is the biggest misinformation that circles around, because you know what all those lights do? People shutter up, so they don't see what's going on. Next, I heard the word, people that build these big houses and invest so much in their property and have the big lights, how can you tell them to now shut, shield their lights or do something when they've invested all this money in their property? What about the guy next door that invested all this money in his property, doesn't have that big million-dollar house, and those lights are all through his property and in his windows? Next, violation, I heard burden. It would be a burden to tell somebody to shield their light or change a light bulb. It's a burden paying taxes in the city and not being able to use some of your property because of the glare. I submitted recent photos to city council via NIC and asked that they forward that in my last letter to planning. That light with that glare, that, even that one single light, lights my living room ceiling, illuminates my bedroom ceiling, still illuminates the lock on my door, which puts me at risk for safety. Okay? You're not getting a lot of complaints, and you know why? Here's some humor. Mackinac Bridge started construction here in Michigan, March, May 1st, 1954. It completed construction and was open to the public on November 1st, 1957, but it was actually was open with traffic in August of 1957. It took three years to build the Mackinac Bridge from start to finish in a very bureaucratic state, across some very treacherous water. And we can't get the lights taking away all of my rights out of my house? I'm tired of this. I am sick and tired of it, and I'm tired of a discriminatory ordinance. It's discriminatory when you afford people in single family, no lights, but single family to single family at the mercy of somebody across the street. I hope you all saw the photographs. It illuminates through my entire house, whether you like it or not. Now, a little discussion on Detroit Edison. People didn't call the city. We all called Detroit Edison direct. Even by NIC, they turned the light and they shielded it. They shielded it by us, they shielded down the street, that's what they did, they did custom shields. And you know why? Because there were so many complaints in the city of Rochester. That's it. And when they replaced our light, they took the shield off. And unfortunately, the one guy got, who always was one of these, I like lights, he wanted it out of his house and his bedroom. Detroit Edison was very nice when they did the shield. You know what they told me? Those lights are made for the intersection in the corner, not to trespass on anybody's property. That light doesn't belong. Did you see the glare? It's impossible to measure right through. And then the other two lights. Yesterday, or Friday, no, Saturday, I'm sorry, Saturday, I had my porch lights on. I was decorating- I was decorating for Christmas. I walked down my porch steps to my walk. There's more grass or more plants, and then it steps down to the sidewalk. Now, with my porch light here, my shadow should be going towards the sidewalk. Guess what? I'm standing with my light coming this way, his light coming this way, and guess where my shadow was? Up my porch, on my doors. There's something very wrong. And you know what? I do feel like I'm being kicked. This is just another kicking down the street. We have a planning commission that doesn't want to face, that there are other people that have complained, and the reason the chief doesn't know about it is because they all look at me and go, you're a fool. They're not going to do anything. Three years, and guess what? You're kicking the can where? These are my rights. Is it a burden? Who are you supporting here?
Thank you.
You're supporting the people. No, you're going to hear this. It's discriminatory.
Thank you. You've had your say. Anyone else like to speak on this?
Rose, is anyone waiting?
No, I do not see anybody with their hand up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just have a question to the attorney. If this were to move forward, I have some questions regarding language. So it says, must be directed away from and shielded. So you have to shield no matter what, even if it's directed away from, and not causing a problem the way this is written, if I understand it right. Has to be both.
Well, the outcome is the more important thing, whether it's shielded or angled. The outcome is really what's driving that section, which is so that the direct light doesn't fall onto another residential lot. I could put in.
Well, I just, I'm just questioning the language, and then you brought up my next point, which, read down, it says, such that no direct light falls. I don't know how you would say, what is no direct light? How do you measure no direct light? That seems a very difficult.
Because if you can see it.
I mean, that just seems like a very challenging thing to describe. I'm going to say there's light, and someone else will say, well, there is no light. What's direct light? Measurement? I don't know. Maybe that falls back to the one-foot candle. I don't know, it just seems, the language seems like there's a challenge inside, even though we could say we understand the intent.
I would agree with everything you just said.
Mr. Chairman, we went back to, someone in the beginning wanted to say, you couldn't see the light source. And that's, at that point, we were like, well then, how can you do that?
Can see a light from the line.
Why have a light then? Somebody turn off all your lights, so that, that, we couldn't enforce that, because that would make it very clear, you can't see the light. No lights emitted, there's no light source even visible, and we thought, that's impossible.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just.
Just to mention.
I guess I'm just reading on the commercial side, the wording, so I'm wondering why we have new wording. Just keep it the same. Just apply it to residential. I don't get it.
Read the commercial.
Sure. Subsection 3B, exterior lighting from a commercial building or multiple family dwelling in any district that abuts and faces a single-family dwelling in a residential district, shall have shielding that directs the light downward, such that the light does not shine on the window side of said single-family dwelling. So we're creating this whole new monster on the residential side. Just simply apply it to residential. I don't get it. We're making this too complicated.
Can I, I have an argument there. Like, when you drive around at a residential, most lights you see, you have that picture, have glass, or more decorative in nature, right? And they're lower. Like, my lights are only six feet tall, right? So if I was to have something that directs them down, and I do, I have this on my garage, I have these like goose neck lights that point down. I have light that's like, only reaches like five, six feet away. For me, that doesn't provide, I personally feel like having a lighted area when I'm walking around provides more safety. I think people are going to close their blinds at night, because if they're open, and you have light on inside, you see inside. It's not because there's lights outside. That's not why I close my blinds. I close them because my lights are on inside. So I think that residential is very different. On a commercial building, that's 30 feet tall, when you have a light at the top, and that was a lot of like the Great Oaks buildings, these lights were really high up, right? And they're facing, projecting outwards, they're not just illuminating, you know, your front porch, or your back door. They're projecting much further, whereas residential, when you're six, eight feet, maybe 10 feet off the ground, you really shouldn't be lighting that far in distance, right? So I view it, personally, I view it based on like the height differences between the homes. Now, if you put a spotlight way up high, like the top of your roof, I think that's just being obnoxious. And I would, you know, think that that should be shielded. But I think that is why I wouldn't push for shielding on the residential versus commercial, given the height differences.
Okay, so this is citizen complaint initiated, correct? And out of one side of our mouth, we've said, only one person in town actually has a problem. So how do we then tell, hang on, how do we tell the rest of the 13,999 people that this is not something we should consider?
Why don't we use the internet to give them a poll, and see if there is an issue?
We've talked about this for a year and a half at these meetings, and
At least.
we haven't had anybody else come forth. They're all publicized, right? This is all recorded, it's in the meeting minutes.
You're on TV right now.
People, there were a lot of people that commented about the commercial side. A lot of people came in. So.
And that apparently has been rectified by the administration. So we don't hear that anymore, other than this.
I'm not saying don't do anything. I just think the way that this is presented, I wouldn't be in support of.
What would you be in support of, to move to council?
I've been reading what other cities do, and frankly, the multiple that I've come across, they don't govern residential. So I, if Vidia, or somebody that works in planning, that has worked with other cities, has come up with something that's appropriate, I would look towards that guidance. I'm not necessarily a lighting expert.
Can I add to that, that I still want to see residential light situations that are perceived to be a problem?
If I may, and I'm not trying to invade anyone's privacy, but I would be in favor of a field trip over to the corner of Fourth and Taylor, and see for our own eyes, what that looks like, you know? And I guess if any of us could go stand in the corner, but I'm certainly going to take a walk over there and see what it looks like at night, because I want to see what the resident, you know, I'm curious now. So, that would be where I would start with.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just from Popular Mechanics, the K number of Kelvin in lighting standards is for the scientific measurement for the color of the light itself. Higher numbers of Kelvin are not brighter, just whiter, such as a 5,000 K or such. The measurement in Kelvin affects only the appearance of what the light color might be, not of the brightness.
Okay.
The lady that complained didn't like the white lights at night, and they are whiter if you go look at them, but they're not any brighter. They're just whiter than the yellow.
When LEDs first came out, they were awful. And I think, as you have mentioned, we.
Headlights, headlights driving down the expressway right now.
Oh, we're getting used to it. Mr. Attorney, what is our duty tonight? Other than discussing, which we have obviously done.
I see two paths. One is, is if you feel like additional information is warranted, you are not required to set the public hearing the first time you consider this. So if there's additional information, you could adjourn it for, and seek whatever additional information you want to. Or you could set this for a public hearing, and still do that due diligence, because then you would have the public hearing, and you'd be right back, right back here. So if you're, if there's something pressing that you're looking for, or adjustments that you want to make, that can be handled between now and, because, you know, you'd have 15 days. So you're looking at January, maybe even February, it depends on publication, before it could be set for a public hearing anyway. So, that's, you know, at some point, I would say your directive is to make, you know, is to send your report.
At some point.
Yes, I wouldn't say.
So if we took another month or two to evaluate, et cetera, we'd be okay?
I don't, I don't see, I mean, you've done that before. You've made, you know, requested.
I think we know our duty here, and we will absolutely get to it. Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, before we move on.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, it's a good conversation, and certainly, if people want to get more information, they can. I guess, I would like it to, and I've talked to the city manager about this. You know, I think this board, the planning commission, and the city council, we need to vote on this. We've talked about it for years, you know, we need to vote, city council needs to vote, and get, you know, make a decision one way or the other. I mean, we've, we can go around and around, and more information, and again, I'm all for more information. But, you know, let's have a, let's have a public hearing, let's vote on it. If it comes back to city council, let the city council vote on it, in one way or the other, to support.
Why don't you make a motion? One month or two.
To have.
Set a public hearing.
Make a motion to have a public hearing on this issue at the next available time, to give people time to look at it if they want more information, to do that. But then at the city, at the, we have the public hearing, we'll have a vote.
Support.
With the wording at this.
January or February, Nick? Where would we fit in here?
Yeah, I would think February, just because I don't, we need to know what you want. I don't hear any clear, you want 10 examples. We'd have to ask the complainant what the standard is. I don't see any problems.
So I would say, with the existing ordinance.
I have a question procedurally. So we have a, for a public hearing, we vote. If the vote is thumbs down, is that it? It doesn't go to city council anymore?
No, it goes to city council.
So it's perfunctory in a sense, okay.
And city council can approve it, even though we may have voted it down, just so everyone knows that.
I think the mayor's saying kind of call question, let's get it going, because they ultimately counsel us against it.
So the council wants to hear from the planning commission.
Okay.
And then, and it could be unanimous no, or how, you know, it could be, I can't remember how many people are on this commission right now.
Further clarification, Mr. Chairman?
It could be, it could be seven against it to two, or something like that, and then it goes to city council. And then city council, we bring it up, and we have a vote. And then it's a yes or a no, and.
I, my only issue, I would support a change that does appropriately address it. But what is that change? I don't view what was put here as the appropriate, why 100 watts? What substantiates 100 watts is right, right?
Agreed, agreed. I want to strike that metric.
I don't think we are there. So then what is it, right? Like, so we're not anywhere.
I'm imploring, I'm imploring this whole commission, let's find.
So, and I've looked at three cities surrounding us, Auburn Hills, Rochester Hills, and Birmingham. None of them regulate the, the single-family residential.
So maybe that's the issue then. Do we even?
And that's, in my point.
We already do more than what they do, and I'm not saying that that's a good practice either. But what's a baseline? What are other communities doing?
And what kind of complaints are they getting, or not getting, right?
Mr. Chairman, you know, as a consultant for many years, I've represented 35, 40 different municipalities, and lighting's always been an issue, and much more complicated than any of us are even discussing tonight. As someone who's testified on the issue, thinking he knew what he was talking about, they tore me to pieces, because I had a fancy light meter like the chief had, and so I got to go out there as the consultant and waste an evening sitting there, saying, okay. And waiting a half hour and doing the measurement again, and most of those involved a commercial operation, and a residential operation, and how those two interact.
Residential complaining about the commercial problem.
Exactly, exactly. In most cases, it had to do with waterfront communities, so it's not really similar to these issues. But in many cases it is, because trying to measure that light professionally is extremely difficult. And I've got a horrible book on that, if anyone wants to borrow it, and you can spend weeks and weeks reading it, and you still won't know what it says. But very, very complicated issue and subject to try to break down. And I think that's why most ordinances that do address residential and commercial for that matter, tend to just stick with visible light source and light levels at the property line. Most of them use foot candles for measurements at property lines. Typically, lumens are used for interior measurements. And anyway, I would just tell you, it's, you know, even if you get to the point where, you know, a lot of it comes down to the enforcement officer going up to the door and saying, I gotta write you a ticket. Over those damn light bulbs? Yes, over those light bulbs. Well, okay, I'll put two new ones in tomorrow. Thank you. So, you know, it kind of comes down to a threat basis, but where you do have someone that says, no, I'm not changing them, and you do end up going to court, it's an ugly issue, and much more difficult than any of us are talking about with.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yeah, and just, I know the chief in the past has said he needs something to quantify. So he can, you know, so it's not totally subjective. So I believe we have to give the chief or administration something.
You have it now. I mean, you have a number.
It's one-foot candle.
Right.
Yeah. So we could come back with an ordinance that says, here's the ordinance, that's, this is our ordinance we're giving you, and then you could vote, no, I don't like the existing ordinance, tell the council, we don't like it, and let the council figure out what could happen, which gets us back in the circle again. What is the fix? What, it seems to be light source. You would have to just clearly shield the light source straight down to eliminate the complaint. I don't know any other way to soften it, or can you have little holes in there so some light gets out? When it's a full moon, it's in your house. How can we stop that? I can quantify for the chief, it's got to be either block the light source, so only it goes straight down, or no one else can see it, and then, good luck with that.
So then we're going to change, you know, 13,000 lights in the city for one.
Then we're going to have B and Es, and we're going to have robberies, and we're going to have, and then people are going to come back and say, you fools, things were working just fine. You had one complaint.
So maybe the public hearing is, it's the same, and we vote on that.
So I just want to ask, how many commissioners here have actually gone out to this property? Okay, and your opinion then? It's not obtrusive?
Pat, the lights were off the night I went there. The guy didn't have his lights on. They're off. So I'm sitting there at the intersection, and it's dark.
It's not, and we've had absolutely no problems or complaints. And he has turned them off when he leaves to go hunting and fishing.
That doesn't seem too smart, but.
But the chief, but the fire chief has looked at it and said it's not.
Been there at least a dozen times.
And said it's.
I've noted it a dozen times.
And you said it's not a violation.
It's below one candela at the property line.
What's your motion? Try it again.
Has the court reported it, repeated it yet?
Yeah.
So, I will motion to set a public hearing to vote, to talk about the existing ordinance.
Okay, there you go. And whenever the administration.
So for that, let's do January. Why wait? If it's the existing ordinance, we don't have to find new things to help you with. Let's do it and get it over with.
Okay, do we have support for the motion?
But a number of people aren't going to be here at the January meeting.
Okay. That's the problem. I see January not being well-attended, and I'd put it up to February.
I'd say so for February, so we can get everybody's.
Okay, okay. Motion to set public hearing for February. David supports it.
For with that new motion, I was going to ask a question clarifying Commissioner Hauser's statement earlier about process. If we have a public hearing, we don't necessarily have to make a vote. We just, that's gathering.
You have to hold a public hearing.
You just have to, but I think what was said was.
There don't have to be a motion after the public hearing.
So that can just be another data gathering process.
Could be that also, yeah.
And we will try to get this out there, so people know, come and talk.
That would be very helpful.
We want more info from the, if there's a lot of people offended, and somebody might think it's something that works for them, we want to know that. We're not saying Pat's wrong, it's just, it's a circumstance that we're just on numbers, it's not there at this point. So it's the stop sign. Everybody, one person wants to stop, a light now, Romeo and Letica. One person, we try to explain to them that we can't, it's, you have to go by numbers. One's not gonna get it, so.
So we have a motion with support to hold a public hearing at the first meeting in February, whatever the date may be, in order to discuss the existing city lighting ordinance. Is that correct?
The existing, not this proposed.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Is it the existing?
Yes.
Right, and, and the reason we're doing this is because city council asked the planning commission to have, to give them their opinion.
Why don't we add that to the motion, that at the request of the city council, we're holding a public hearing?
Correct.
If you would do that, please, add that. Okay with that change?
I am.
Okay, the roll call, please.
Okay, Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Chairman, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Gasson?
Yes.
Okay. Where are we? Vice Chairman Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Stone.
Yes.
Chairman McGee.
Yes.
Councilman Sage.
Yes.
Chairman, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Lord.
Yes.
And Commissioner Kenji.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, a very good discussion. Number seven miscellaneous, and number eight public comment. Is there any other public comment? Pat, come on up.
I just want to know if at the public hearing, I'd like to bring the photographs, even more recent photographs, so that the public who will be here, round it up.
Sure, bring it up.
Will have an idea to post again, so they know exactly what it looks like from my bedroom, my house, my porch, and also what I presented to city council, the difference of property rights where you see in residential, where the light falls on that person's property line-like, but does not trespass. Because if all these other cities could shield, and they say light illumination stays on the property it originates on, it shouldn't be a problem.
Nick, how would we show her pictures?
Yeah, I think people are getting confused with looking at a bulb in a distance. I look at my one neighbor's bulb down the street, but it doesn't illuminate my property.
So get him to Nick early so he can scan him, and then we'll be able to put him up.
Okay, I want all the photographs back up so that people understand, because there isn't anybody that has a big, white, bright, but their whole house, right out the back, my porch, my lock. And I'll tell you right now, if I have to shutter up at night, and that's the word that's used in the neighborhoods, you ready for this? With my lock illuminated on my front door, you think I feel real safe?
We understand.
It's not right, it's just, it's just not.
Thanks for all the time you put into this, we'll see you in February.
You know what, three years of time and I'm still nowhere, right?
Well, I don't know, if you got a good vote here tonight. Thank you. Okay, any other public comment?
Yep, I have one person waiting, Jen Reese.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Reese and I live at 757 Ludlow.
Good to see you again, how are you?
Good, I'm sorry I wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting, I couldn't get the link to work. But I'm hoping to get some clarification about the SolarOnics property. I know, well, you guys know, a lot of us are very passionate about it. And we know a lot of time, money, and staff were invested in creating the master plan that was adopted just this year. So I'm wondering if I could get some clarification about why rezoning could be a consideration, given that this project doesn't follow the future land use map, because it's designated as RT. And the master plan talks about how RT is going to abut existing neighborhoods to keep with the character because it has a single-family appearance with one door, but could be up to a quadplex. But also, it doesn't even comply with the current RM2 zoning requirements that are in the master plan. The master plan says RM2 is 14 to 16 units per acre, and this project is 27.3 units per acre. So there's that. And then we've been watching the, the meetings, because we're all pretty curious. And we've heard that it could have been a dog boarding facility or an ax throwing place with volleyball or storage or single-family homes, but we've heard over and over, we couldn't get the numbers to work. So I'm curious, who is the we in we couldn't get the numbers to work for these things? And I'm wondering, is this property owner getting a special benefit of city help that is not commonly enjoyed by property owners such as myself? The city would not help me sell my house, and so would this set a precedent? So I'm, I'm confused, I'm wondering if there could be some clarification why this would be considered. Also, who is the we in we can't get the numbers to work? And could this be considered spot zoning?
Nick, I can answer that. So easy one, we is the developers who came in. All three of those developers could make their numbers work financially with a ax throwing place, with the indoor volleyball, with the indoor dog park, with their 32 single-family homes and the public storage. They withdrew their requests because they could not make the numbers work, so that's who the we is. Now, a master plan is just that, it is a master plan, it's not a zoning map, it's simply a tool to help direct. I can tell you that during the, you call it thorough master, I think you used the word thorough, master plan extensive money that the city said, we didn't even look at the SolarOnics property as RT, RM. We didn't even focus on that at all. Should we have? Absolutely, but nobody picked up on that property as a problem to do it. So we thought it was a potential intensive change area. We thought it was something called a PICA or potential change, and potential intensity change area. In fact, when we got to the map and it was adopted, it is not a PICA. So that means now you have to stand by this existing zoning, which is industrial. RT is a tool. RT also, if you read the actual RT in the master plan, it doesn't even talk about SolarOnics. It talks about on the other side of town and how they're relating to the west side of town more than this property. So that's why you have, anybody can come in and request a rezoning on any piece of property in town, and they have to make their case, and then the city, planning commission, and ultimately city council has to make that case based on the facts of the lay of the land, different things. Now, I can probably make everybody feel a little better, if I may, give you an update what happened today. So Patrick and I met for an hour with the developer. Developer came in and had 14 items that the public brought up and took very good notes and, and took it very serious. So I can't share everything because they have to bring it in, but I will tell you that, I, I asked him if I could share this, right, Pat? And they said, they dropped it a whole story, they put part of it below ground. They're at 35, 38 feet, probably can get it to 36 feet. Remember, RT is two and a half stories and 35 feet. If you go to Ludlow, stand on Ludlow and look at the Baldwin Apartments, Ludlow Apartments, and tell me how many stories those are. I wasn't here when they built those, but if those aren't three stories, you can see full three sets of glass, looks like three floors. I think because they sunk some of them, they call them garden style, so technically it's two and a half stories because part of the window's below ground. These guys have looked at even doing that, which means they have to get into this dirt. To get into the dirt, they're having an analysis done with the Brownfield folks to see can, how much deeper can they go without getting into special vapor bears and stuff? They're gonna have to do extraordinary things anyway, but they have literally come in, dropped the units by a third to get it down there, because they took a whole floor off. What they did was decided to not park under the first floor. Remember, it was really three stories of apartments. They went to first floor, no parking except in, so they cut them in half, kind of tandem parking like we've done elsewhere, where they can have half the first floor being a unit, so they're smaller, and then half the unit be parking. That let them take a whole floor off the building and the massing came down significantly. So from what we saw, and what you'll probably see in January, we asked them not to spend a lot of money on Brownfield numbers and things. They're gonna come back to this commission, we're gonna invite the public again, so they can all see what they've done to try to address the concerns of the residents. Then, if they, they would like some direction from the planning commission, are we headed in the right direction? Then they would come back with a conditional rezoning, not to RM2 or R, it'd probably be RM1. They are under density for even RT. The way they calculate it's based on, I think it's 1,000 square feet for a one-bedroom, 2,000 square feet for a two-bedroom. They redid it all, and even under RT and RM, they are under compliance, we're not asking for additional density. So the only reason they can't do RT is because of the setbacks. So if they went to RM1, it would be a conditional rezone to that site plan, which has, meets setbacks of that, of RT.
All the way around?
All the way around. And we even talked about opening the back up to the front, remember, somebody had a good suggestion? I think about, how about put the green space facing Ludlow? Well, they want to have the look to the river and put all the green space for their residents to the river. So they had some more surf, they made a little bit more surface parking on the one side. They took into account Councilman Stages about, tried to keep some of that parking way or buffer it harder on the trail. They met with Melissa Ford again, I think. Yeah, and they came to a conclusion of what to plant there, so that would give them some privacy. So I think, again, we didn't give them any indication how we feel, but they outlined everything they did in response to that meeting. And I think you're gonna like what you see, that they listened, don't know if you're gonna approve it or not. We didn't make any recommendations to them, but they will come back one more time soft to get a feeling for that, let the residents see it, and maybe get some more input from the residents. And then, at that point, if you want to set a public hearing, we would do that.
So it would come back as a consideration?
That's correct.
And then a public hearing?
Correct.
A month or two after that?
Is the January 3rd meeting?
January 3rd, yeah.
That's a good point.
If I may, I, I just, it was four stories and 106 units divided by four stories would be 26 units per floor. So at three stories, that'd be 78, divided by the acreage, that's still 20 units per acre, which is still pretty high. And then the other thing I just want to point out, the higher buildings, the master plan does denote those for the south end because I think the land is lower and the skyline test from looking in town. And then the other thing that a lot of us are worried about is Dillon and Upton is, is zoned the exact same way. So God forbid anything happened to that business. We are worried that that could set precedent, that another complex could be built right there. Because a precedent is very important in the city. And, and I'm worried about like, helping, helping this property owner going above and beyond to sell this property and not, like Scott said in the beginning, not letting him, them deal with the consequences of whatever it is that they bought or did or whatever it might be.
Ma'am, this property owner has the legal right to suggest or propose anything to this commission. We are not favoring him or disfavoring him. He has a legal right under the law to bring any project he wishes before these commissions.
Well, the word we had some of us concerned.
You should not rely on the word, ma'am, you should come to the meetings and find out.
I, I have been to the meetings, thank you for letting me speak.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, now, Nick is number nine.
Chairman, I'm sorry, there's still, there's two others waiting. Nancy is next.
Sorry, go ahead, Nancy. We see a Nancy Dosin. Nancy. Nancy, maybe you're on mute. Okay, Rose, who else do you have?
Christine Zimmerman.
Christine, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
So just one quick question that I have about the conditional rezoning is, does, if, if you do a conditional rezoning and then down the road they sell the property to somebody else, are, is the, are the new owners also obliged to follow the conditional rezoning, or does it revert back to the original zoning, or how does that work?
It runs with the land, it's, it's a restriction put on the land. So even if they sell it, this restriction remains.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for calling. And the other person. Nancy, are you there? Rose, I think we lost her.
Yeah, I think you're okay, I don't see her hand raised anymore.
Okay, Nick, how about number nine, the Greenery and the Downtown Inn?
Yep, so number nine would be our future events coming up. So Pat and I have been busy with developers here, it's good to see people are starting to look at the economy in a little bit different way and, and things are opening up a little bit. So the Greenery is the elevator site, Mosher and Biewell have partnered up 50/50 to come in with a conditional rezoning because it's zoned industrial and B1. Another case where the master plan didn't pick up the PICA line properly. It followed a property line and there's two parcels there, so we can't use a PICA. So they're gonna come in and do a straight rezoning, a conditional rezoning to a new district. So if you remember what we went through in 2014, we created 15 new districts. And they went through the planning commission, public hearings, got adopted, everything was great. Most of them went to city council, all but two. At the time, the sitting council, sitting council said, wait till they're all done, we're gonna do it at one fell swoop. So we did not bring the normal procedure, which would have been advertise, have the public hearing at the city council, advertise 10 days later, new district. We didn't do that. So they are in limbo right now. So we're taking, Patrick and I, taking it on ourselves, and we're gonna go through each district. And if it doesn't have any changes that came out of this body, we're gonna take them to the city council and ask them to actually have one more look at them, confirm them, put them in the paper, and they're good. If they do that and they follow the MU1, that city council's gonna get shown on December 17. That would then allow them to come in for a rezoning, a straight-up rezoning to MU1, and then bring in their site plan with it as, as a development of the elevator site. So that's probably February, March, April, by the time we get to that. Downtown Inn, we're, we're still doing our best with Mr. Kalash. I think Pat and I are gonna bring forward to you, they, they can't quite get on the same page as Vidya, and Vidya's doing her job, but this is an existing building that they're making minor changes to. And it's very, he's very adamant about, it's not like I'm starting over, I'm not doing anything but paying the billing and ripping on some, a little bit of payments. So I think we're gonna bring them forward. Vidya's been great trying to coach, coach them to get there, and they're being kind of stubborn. So we'll come to some middle ground, we're gonna all sit in a room together, Vidya, us two, and the developer, and say, just do a few of these things, we'll bring it to our commission and try to get that approved, so.
So what will be proposed is a.
It's the same thing, downtown inn, they already changed the name, they already painted the outside, it's the facade changer. He would like to do more facade changes that would, more than he's done that just painting it. So the preserves on that story, Lucherco down on 110 South Street. Last time, if you remember, we had a easement going through the property that he thought he could get taken away, disposed of if you like, could not. The existing person that has the easement said, it's staying, so he's had to redo his.
What's the nature of the easement?
Apartments again, so they're four store, there were five four-story buildings, I think he's getting it down to what, one or two?
I haven't seen a new drawing yet, he's supposed to have it in shortly.
Yeah, they've been talking to us, so that, that's on the old cement plant. Greens Art Supply, so that's really a facade change only. So Artera, Artera bought the building, they're next door Realtor right now. They leased before, now they bought the building, make a two-stories workspace, work share space, so. But they're doing a facade renovation, so they have to come in for that. Brown Iron Brewery is from Washington Township, they are looking to, they are purchasing the veterinarian clinic on Second Street in Water. They unfortunately couldn't keep them in town, they needed more space and there was no room to grow.
Where are they going?
So I think they're going to Auburn Hills, actually. And then, so Brown Iron Brewery has got an option to buy the property, they would bring their brewing operation down here in Wash, from Washington, open that up for a little bit bigger restaurant. Here, they're zoned industrial so they could brew, and then we'd have a special exception to offer a smaller restaurant, like 99 seats, outdoor dining, a little mini Brown Iron Brewery down there at the facility. And so we're working through that right now. Crook Cards is coming in with the third iteration.
Have you seen anything?
I did, it's much better, I'm not gonna lie. I, I think they did this time genuinely try to meet the spirit of the ordinance, screening on the top, met with the resident at the top, more defined where they're putting things, we might have a shot at this one. So I think we're gonna see them back in January. Paint Creek Luxury Condos, again, that's SolarOnics. And then the Brownstones, we were trying to have Mr. Schneider here tonight, I think I told you the story before, but in the windstorm back in the fall, he, the building blew down basically. So he met with the building official fire chief, then they came up with alternative ways to, to put, build that building out of wood, not.
Which building is this?
I'm sorry, the Brownstones between Ferndale and Glendale, there was 10 of them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They got the first two buildings up, the wind blew them down. So he settled with the insurance company, they've come back, and he's gonna make, now that he's looking at it in a different light, they have some different materials that we felt should come back to the commission to make sure that's exactly what's on paper, so he's gonna do that. He found a way to modify the garages based on market study, how to make them more responsive to what the people want, a different railing in the front. What else was it, Pat? I think that's pretty much it. Oh, and that, yeah, the, yeah, and then on the north side of the, the farthest north building, they had escape windows. And once they got in there and dug down, they realized they could, literally went to Vito Pamplona, who owns the property next door, go sheer down, flatten it out, build retaining wall on his side, and then have light windows so you could, it's not an escape window, it's like a full window.
Full engine window.
So we told them, so the building code wanted that anyway, it's a fully suppressed building, et cetera. So he's gonna come back with his changes. We were trying to have them tonight because it's a quick one, but what he's done is, he's good for another month or so to keep working on putting the roof on and everything, so we'll bring him back in January in one meeting just to show you the changes, and I think you'll be.
You know if there are any sales?
Not, he's, probably not yet because of. Not, he's, probably not yet, because he doesn't have a roof on him yet, but I think he's very encouraged to keep going, so.
I have a question on, on D.
Chairman, I have Nancy back on, she might have had technical difficulties, but she'd like to speak.
Hi Nancy, welcome. Hi Nancy.
She's on mute. Hi, I got bumped off for some reason.
Well, we don't want that, I'm glad you're calling, glad you're calling.
Thank you. I am homebound and need to have, be able to get onto the Zoom meetings, but I'm having great difficulty making connections with you. Today, I called four different offices in the city, and no one returned my call to set up a Zoom or figure out how to get onto these. So I wonder if I can get in the loop somehow to be acknowledged with Zoom.
Yeah, Nick, can you make arrangements to contact Nancy?
Funny enough, we were going to bring up as our last miscellaneous item that we would like to get away from Zoom, because all the, City Council is the only one right now besides this group doing Zoom. Everybody else has been told, you have to come in here to have our meeting. So it's your call, it's cumbersome on us, cost us overtime to do this. I understand it's convenient, and the world's got to get, gotten to that, but almost all communities now have gotten away from Zoom.
Back to appearing in person.
Whatever you say, but if in fact we keep Zoom, Nancy, yes, you didn't call our office, because we could get that taken care of in a second. So I'm not sure who you called, but we'll certainly get her in the loop if we continue to do Zoom.
Nancy, would you call the city manager's office in the morning, and you'll get Nick, and he'll arrange to get you some help?
Yep, or Holly, if you get me or Holly, we'll take care of you.
Thanks very much, I enjoy the meetings.
Thank you, thanks for calling.
Just your thoughts on Zoom, again, we'll do whatever you say, but we're trying.
I hadn't thought about it, does anyone else have?
I think probably, you know, if we were to do away with it, I would do a phase out, so, you know, maybe 90-day notice type thing.
So we'd go back to the way we did before, where you can patch a phone call, and such is Nancy.
You could always do that.
What would you do with Vidya, though? Would she have to drive over here?
She'd have to be here. Sorry Vidya, if you're still there.
I'll be there.
I would say, you know, phase it out at the March, you know, March 1st morning.
Anyone have an objection to that?
Mayor, have you had, have you talked about it for council, have you guys talked about it? I don't think we have, have we?
Yeah, we haven't talked about it.
You will next time.
Does it make it more inclusive for the community, though, if there are people that have challenges?
I think yes.
Absolutely.
Like I.
I think, I'd like to see us defer to the council.
What's the harm in having it?
Us to stay on Zoom.
Is it a cost? I don't know.
It's a technical difficulties, it's kind of chops up meetings. We've had, these go much smoother than most of them, trust me, if you're in some of the elements we're in, it's a nightmare. But it's cost, I mean, Rose has to stay up.
I would say we defer to the mayor and the council, if they wish for us to stay on Zoom, we stay on Zoom.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
The question I had, I don't know quite how to phrase this. When I see Greens become office, that's bothersome to me. Just a resident speaking up, I.
I think you might not have been at the meeting that I talked about Roger Knapp, former mayor, came to the DDA, met with me first and talked about planning principles about in other communities, and we found a bunch of other downtown traditional communities that make a prohibit anything other than retail or service industries on the first floor. No general or medical office on the first floor. We don't discriminate, because you can say you can go on the second floor. So we are drafting that ordinance to bring it to the planning commission, based on, the DDA supported him, said, we have, bless you, we understand that? We've got, in our own ordinance, in downtown, in CBD, in B1, and O1, you can only do apartments, upper-story apartments. So we've already crossed that threshold and said.
Everyone see my point?
Oh, yeah.
We're darned as to get a retail beautiful downtown, and we get office space on the first floor, I mean, and that's a huge chunk of.
5,000 square feet in the first floor. So we are bringing an ordinance that would address.
Anyone object to that?
No, we talked about this before, I think.
We did.
But is real estate service, like I just?
So service would be a salon.
Because like banks.
Barber salon.
Right, a bank, it would depend on the drive.
You're kind of, like banks also, you know?
It's just general office, we're trying to avoid, again, we love our Realtors.
I'm not saying get rid of them.
Yeah, but go around the corner.
But like, are they service?
They'll go upstairs.
For real estate? Okay, I just want to make sure we're capturing it appropriately.
Yeah, we'll vet it out, there's many, many communities that, we'll bring.
And there's no problem with this type of an ordinance?
No, I mean, because you're going to be applying it generally, right?
Yes.
And other downtown communities have the same.
As long as they have an option on the main street, that's.
That's right. Because you, I mean, your whole point of your downtown, right, is exactly what you expressed, is to have, I mean, not that people don't come to offices, but it's a different feel. And so I've seen other communities, in fact, Vidya, I think, was going to, was going to pull some in her other examples for us to noodle and to bring back, so.
Yeah, Patrick's had dealt with it before, too, so. I mean, general office is closed on the weekends, and closed at night, so you're not really helping yourself at all.
Oh, their spaces.
We want, they bring clients here.
Yeah, but there are other spots.
And we talked to Greens about that, and he bought the building, so he's like, he's moving his building, his group on the first floor, and then second floor will be a share space. So he thought he was accomplishing it, because he's, he said, I'm giving up the retail next, my office next door, so you can get retail. Right now, I could go back to another office.
Yeah.
So we want to get this on the books pretty quick.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else, okay. What I thought was going to be a short meeting turned out to be a long meeting, that's okay. Unless anyone.
What's that?
Merry Christmas.
Oh, well, that's true, that's true, Merry Christmas, we're not meeting again. Merry Christmas or Happy Hanukkah, or whatever the case may be. So without further ado, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.